Are we ready to go? We're ready to go. All right. So we have today Hyper Fiber here to tell us about what they'd like to do with the bringing fiber in for the City of Ocean Shores. To my right here is Dan Kennedy, he's the president and CEO of the company. Next to him is Matt Meyer. And Matt, what is your position?
I'm Senior Vice President of Engineering and Construction.
All right. Thank you for that. And then Lori Hills is down at the far end. She's the one that contacted us and talked to us about the opportunities that Hyper Fiber can bring to this city. And it was pretty exciting for Scott and I to listen, and so we wanted to make that available for the public to listen and ask questions and such after we get done with the short slideshow here. I don't know which one of you would like to talk through that? Is that you, Dan?
Go ahead.
You gotta push the button there.
Thank you for having us today. We really appreciate you coming out. And make sure you get some food before it's gone. They put out a beautiful spread for us. We are from Hyper Fiber, and we would just like to talk to you a little bit about who we are and what we do. If you could go ahead and go to the next slide. Dan, do you want to go ahead?
Sure, I'll simplify this for everybody because I hate reading from slides. That'd put everybody to sleep. We're a company that builds fiber in the home here in the United States. I've been doing this a little over thirty-something years. Actually, I learned how to do this in the military, so one of those few people that can stand up and say, "I had a job that was driven by that career I had." We today are in several states in the Southeast and Midwest, and logically expanding our presence throughout the United States. We also have a sister company that does the same thing in other states under the name Ripple Fiber. And so today, we've collectively invested a little over, you know, right at $400 million. And so when we, you know, build out a community like this, our goal is to try to do everything upfront and work with cities to try to put the best foot forward when we do this. I formerly worked for a city. My business partner's been a city administrator. And one of the toughest jobs you can have, and always says, "City officials live in a fishbowl." So our responsibility, you know, we take that very seriously. So, you know, we're here to sign up as many customers as we can. And the worst thing we can do is have a bad relationship with the city and certainly a bad relationship with the community. And so first and foremost, you know, we're here very grateful that we're all here and you guys have all taken the time to meet with us. But, you know, as you guys will see from these slides, it's just a high-level overview of the services that you're going to get. So we're a multi-gig. And what that means is that, you know, a lot of our speeds, you know, start at 500 meg and go up to, you know, 2 gig. And so you get that at pretty much the same rate that you're going to get from any other provider. Nationally, a majority of our customers take our highest tier. And so it's very attractive because of the service level that it offers to the consumer. And so really a broad coverage. One of the things we all hate when we're trying to stream something is the, call it the circle of death. So when you're trying to stream Netflix, who, whatever it may be, or especially during a major event that you're watching, God forbid that, you know, you lose coverage during that. So our infrastructure is designed to be redundant. But as we grow and build out, I will tell you, I jump on the sword right up front, we will be disruptive to the community. That means you're going to see trucks and vehicles and things in your yard. But we proactively have a group that stays in front of that, that you, you have direct numbers to call for everything that goes on. They're plastered all over everything. You'll be communicated through mail. You'll have a big digital presence that communicates exactly what we do. We communicate with the city. That way, if you have a complaint, nine times out of the ten, we've already communicated to the city what's happened. And so we'll give you a vehicle and an avenue for that. One of the things, as you guys will see right here, we, outside of the notification of your, you know, particular street that we're coming, you'll see people that'll come door to door and kind of educate you on what we do. It's a little bit different approach. This isn't trying to sell you the undercoating on your car, it's to explain to you exactly what's about to happen. And so as, as we're going through the community, it gives you all the local advocates that will be your direct contacts. Like I said, you'll have Lori's contact. There'll be an eight-hundred number and also a local direct number so that you'll always be able to get ahold of somebody at any given time. And that's usually communicated through, like I said, every breadboard, anything that we're doing along with the city and along with any particular street or community, or if it's locally controlled by an individual HOA, it'll be communicated and controlled that way. So again, our goal is to get through this first phase of about 3,600 homes as quickly as we can. But I will tell you, one of the things that's changed, and this is why I want to make sure everybody is aware, you know, communities over the years have changed since COVID. We're all more sensitive to what happens in our neighborhoods. I live in a neighborhood that actually has had the exact same issue. And so, you know, it's important that we go at a pace that services this community. Everybody wants a service now, but if we did that, it would just tear everything up. And so we have to work with the city to have a pace that's logical for what we're trying to do. You want to try the next slide here? This is a good example of kind of the before and after. What you're going to see is kind of the old Boy Scout method. We tried to leave it better than we found it. It's not perfect, guys. I will tell you, it's not. It's, we try to be, but, you know, after we dig a hole, we put some dirt back into it, it does settle, but we do come back and fix it. And we have a program that we have called a Green Team that makes sure that gets taken care of. And that works in conjunction with local landscapers or whatever we need to do to make it right. One of the things that we also have is our employees have the autonomy and the authority to fix any issue. And that goes all the way down to the lowest level person. So if we have an issue, we certainly take care of it. I love this photo here, by the way. This is Florida. Oh, no, this is Arkansas, I apologize. This is an area that we actually left it better than we found it. So the idea is we want to make sure that it looks like we weren't there. And that's really sometimes hard to do, but we do do the best that we can. If a consumer sees something, there's, again, there's an avenue for making that happen. And we try to restore and repair things within the same day. Doesn't always happen, but usually within 24, 48 hours, it's taken care of. Again, to this point, we want to be, we want to make everybody as happy as possible because customer service is what we're known for. And the only way you're going to sign up is if I don't tear up your yard and leave a big pile of dirt, which, you know, over the years, we've had different experiences with different telephone companies or cable companies that have done that whenever they come to a community. We're used to the fact that we're held to a higher standard. So again, this is, you know, what we like, like to do, and it's worked for us extremely well today. So. I like how you like that for fast. Just like our internet. You like that? I couldn't do any better with that if I tried. One of the things you'll also find is it's really easy to sign up. You'll have, if you are, if you like using, you know, readers or whatever the case may be for signing up, we make it as easy as possible. We keep your existing passwords if you've got those and you're using those on your home equipment. We try to use those as well. So again, if you're used to using a certain phrase or whatnot, you have an SSID, which is, you know, how you find your network at home. We make sure that the equipment we put in matches that. So it's something you're used to seeing. We make sure everything in your home that should be connected to it is. There's nothing wrong with us staying in your home longer, other than you guys wanting to go do something else. But the point being is that the average consumer today has, you know, about 20 devices in a home. And you don't really think about it until you go to change the service. So you've got your garage, or maybe you're, like my wife, I don't know, we've got so many things connected. I think our friger, our dryer and washer and refrigerator talk to each other. I mean, it's just, there's so much that we rely on with our Wi-Fi in our homes, we have to make sure that that works before we leave. The good news that you're going to like is the newer equipment today allows for better coverage, more thorough coverage in your home at higher speeds. And that's really the name of the game. So as you've got multiple devices in your home that want to connect, you're going to see that your speed tests are, we give you exactly what we say we're going to do. So, you know, Matt here takes care of all of our construction. He has been doing this thirty years? Yeah, exactly. So certainly, a very, very long time, we always joke about, you know, the things where we started in this technology and where we are today. And I always tell people the worst piece of technology our children are going to know is an iPhone that you have in your pocket. You know, think about what we all grew up with, and it's a heck of a lot different. So anyway, we're very, very proud to be here, and we certainly thank everyone for taking the time to hear me tell a speech. And I think I should have brought the food in here. I think, yeah. I was saying earlier to somebody, if we brought it in here and we don't have to walk so far, it makes for a much more fun and interactive conversation. With that said, I can let Matt here talk to you a little bit about the construction, give you some more background on that.
Yeah, I think Dan nailed it. It's definitely intrusive. We're going to hit some sprinklers, although I don't know how much you guys water here. It seems to be. Take care of yourself, the saw. When we replace the saw, I think it's going to be really good. It's going to take right off. But it is intrusive. Not everybody understands the utility easement and the right-of-way. A lot of times, it extends behind the sidewalk and comes up into the yard a little bit. And those are people's yards, flower beds, and we understand it. And so we need brand ambassadors and advocates to help us explain that we're going to fix that, right? It's definitely intrusive, but we're going to do everything in our power to make it right.
Yeah, I love telling this story. We did the city of, I believe it was Punta Gorda there in Florida. The very first thing the contractor hit was the mayor's house and her sprinkler. I mean, and then when they put it back in, they aimed it the wrong way. So as she got the jokes, as a, you know, ceremony, we gave her a golden sprinkler. So we painted. Yeah, you know, but no, you know, wait again, it's not perfect. You know, contractors that we have, we've been working with a very long time, but we also hire local. And that's extremely important to us because, you know, the dollars that we drive in the community is one thing, but the relationships that make us successful are what we do here. I grew up in a small town, and I can tell you from providing a service in a small town, you can't hide. So if you go to a local restaurant, they'll tell you good, better, ugly, what you're doing. So we apply the same thing here. A big difference I think you'll see is, and I've said this a lot, and it resonated with a gentleman that we talked to today, retired from Comcast. You know, our employees are proud to wear their shirts when they go into a store. I dare you to find that from somebody else. And so, you know, we make, we make what we do, you know, fun, but we're also here to support the community. And that is, you know, we'll sponsor just about anything we can, because one of the things that I enjoy doing is, you know, when you come out and you go to, whether it's a game or whatnot, and the two championship teams have our logos on their shirts, so I really like that. So anyway, we, we do what we can. And that's something over the years I learned from a gentleman many, many years ago, a family-owned telephone company. And he did that one year, I just remember this, we, we didn't buy the cow. And it became a big deal, so we had to buy two cows. So, you know, so over the years, you know, do it right, do it right up front. So anyway, any questions for anybody? I apologize.
No, you're good. Allison's running the mic around, so.
Yeah, while she's headed that way, I just want to reinforce what Dan says. We're going to hire local engineering partners to the best of our ability. Washington is an expensive market to build. Local construction partners, I've already hired a local construction manager, south of Seattle. We'll, we'll put another one in place, especially in market. Technicians, hire local market managers to be our liaison to the community, if you will. We do put a lot of effort into that.
My question was just whether you might have wondered if you could make the whole message shorter by simply asking, "Who in the room wouldn't go for internet at $85 a month?"
That's a great question.
Anybody raise a hand that wouldn't?
You're in charge of sales.
That's it.
No, no. So your husband tells really good jokes.
Oh, thank you very much, I'm sure.
He's not allowed on United Airlines or else?
No, no place. You're absolutely correct. I was wondering, are there any other cities in the state of Washington or Oregon that are close by that you have done this with already?
Years ago, I did a project in Oregon. We assisted the city of Dallas. And it's been many, many years. Over the years of my career, to be fair, we've had directly or indirectly businesses here. We have a 22-city project that we're doing here in the state, so we're spending quite a chunk of change. And, and to be fair, you know, there's a lot of providers here that I know, the CEOs of, et cetera. Zibley is Harold. And so, you know, there are some very good companies throughout the state, but to answer your question directly, this, we've got, I forgot how many we want at the same time.
Roughly 11.
Right. So, you know, you go slower than you used to, so therefore you have to do more cities at the same time. So you'll see us do that. But around the country, we have a sister company as well, and they're, you know, for all fairness to this, at some point, I will stop spending money on both brands and brand one of them. I don't know if we're going to do rock, paper, scissors over which brand we use, but maybe you'll get your husband to tell jokes to her last the most, we'll, yeah, go with that one. Yeah, I think you'll do fine. But we have 240 cities, you know, and growing. So we'll be, you know, we're targeting 11 states and growing. It's, the business has certainly changed and requires us to spread out our footprint a little bit further. But, you know, again, hiring local is key to making this work. And we do, we get, employees come from competitors, et cetera, because when you're in a company like ours, you think about, you know, if we service retirement communities, it's interesting the discussions we have, like where they, their careers have balled. This is no different. We get people in young and different age groups, and then so we have some mentoring, and we also have some that are growing their careers. And it gives somebody in a larger, bigger company an opportunity to grow faster in their career, and then we get a lot of people because of it. That a short answer to your long question?
Go ahead, Matt.
So it'll be quickly evident that I'm already in tech, and I have a list of questions. I don't know how many I can ask. I already got a partial answer, but is there enough backhaul available to the town? Because I know Gray's Harbor PUD's dark fiber capacity is fairly limited.
Great question. And as a perfect way to answer that, we just met with a PUD prior to coming here. So PUD has a pretty large network that will be able to have a redundancy in here. And so the answer to your question is yes.
Yeah, I would add that the limitations, not the fiber itself, but probably the electronics and the capacity they put on it, we will ensure that we.
We had that discussion with them today. So what we'll do is, good example, say it doesn't. So we'll pay for the gear to upgrade it, or we'll pay for the associated redundancy that we need. Some of it may have to be built, some of it may exist. We always prefer it exists, but it's perfect. So the answer to your question is, what they're representing to us is they have the capability for the bandwidth we need.
Sweet. Next question is, I know a lot of people here appreciate local tech support presence from your competitor. Will there be a staff to local office that people can go to for billing and tech support questions?
Yes. So, you know, you have technicians that will, way of morsel or time, will have some centralized pieces to that. For us, it's changed, hiring has changed like I've never seen it before. I think people use AI to write resumes. So we have, we have always and every market has kind of a kit of people we start with, and then it expands and contracts depending on the area. And so, you know, you always have people local, and that's most important. Now, the funny thing about a store, and this is the thing, it's changed, especially the thing about technology, most consumers, I could count on one hand the time they actually walk into a store anymore. So we end up doing different things to fill up different space for different reasons. Sometimes it's to store equipment here, so it's here and not somewhere else that you got to drive and bring it here. So there will be a lot of different, you know, reasons we have a footprint here.
You already answered one of mine with, the question was trenching or pole deployment. Can you do that, like last mile? This town's not that big, but will the last mile be to over pole for the properties that wouldn't be able to trench onto?
Right, so we'll use the infrastructure of the poles that we're allowed to, but again, you know, you get a lot of neighborhoods where it drops off and goes underground for different reasons. We did that, you know, we've all went, nobody likes looking at poles, right? So a lot of areas that have, for beautification reasons, you know, dropped off, will be underground. So it'll be a mix to answer your question.
There's also a lot of camping lots in town, and a lot of those people have internet on their lot. Would you be able to support that if, like, an all-weather box was supplied to put the fiber node into?
So the enclosures that we use are weatherproof. The equipment, I'd be interested, how exactly you will service, because I assume that that's a seasonal, you know, customer. Are those permanent?
They're usually seasonal. Some of us are here in the bad weather times as well.
Well, if you leave it your, you know, particular, you know, whatever there, I mean, you know, whatever, you're a camper, whatever, if you leave on that lot, you know, it'll always be connected.
You can, unfortunately.
Yeah, what I think you'll see is those property owners purchasing a DIA and maybe doing a managed Wi-Fi solution, right, for the, for the various campers on the property. So that's something we could help them with.
Those of us that don't know DIA.
Oh, okay. Direct internet access. Like to your point on the backhaul, right? They would buy a backhaul service from us potentially and then do a managed Wi-Fi solution on the property. That would be my recommendation.
So that goes into my.
We have the same situation in Florida, right? So it's, I mean, almost identical. So, you know, we have some different solutions depending on the person.
Yeah, I have an all-weather box for host connection on mine right now, so I got that set up.
Like some type of Neiman enclosure or something of that nature?
It's just a sealed box that I have all the technical in on the pole. But would we be forced to use your router, or do you support end-user equipment like of PUD?
Well, we're agnostic when it comes to that. If you, you know, for the average consumer that'll be using ours, because again, you know, having consumers tech savvy, you know, in other words, go to Walmart, buy a router and plug it in, that's a high-maintenance style of customer because, you know, they're trying to connect a lot of devices. If they're not as sophisticated as you are, you can do whatever you want. I mean, you know, we don't charge extra for it, so knock your socks off. You'll like the, I'll tell you what, given your background, I would highly recommend you test it because you'll enjoy, it's a Nokia platform, and it's, it's pretty good. But again, if you depend on what you're doing, you're networking your home, your servers, your routers, things that you're doing as your own home networking, you know, whatever it is, you know, you may not care, you do your own and have at it.
I think Matt.
On a camping lot, so.
Yeah, again, we, we're agnostic.
Yeah, I think to Dan's point, you know, 80% of customers aren't, you know, don't know the equipment maybe like you do. So when they have a bad Wi-Fi experience, we own that experience, right? So it ends up being our fault, so we want to do the best we can to make sure that that's, you know, an exceptional service. Sounds like you may need a technician position.
Same exact thing, yeah. We do, we do have openings.
I would add to that, that the, for those people who don't want to dive into the technology, it's all-inclusive in our price. So it's not another $10, another $12. It's that price we, we print, that covers everything.
There's no extra taxes, whatnot, that's your price.
That's all your equipment, that's everything.
I'm down to two questions.
But you can choose something else.
This is our phase one on the slide, which was the whole town. But are you going to start from a centralized location and work your way out from there? And where would that centralized location be?
The step-off point, I don't know if we've got the exact one on this map, but that'll be updated and published as we go along. Because they're working with, we found out today that there's not a hut per se here. There was, there's some discussion apparently between the PUD and, and the city here regarding what, when, where, and how. So we'll, we'll have to be placing our own, depending on what that looks like, et cetera. So that's going to be a little bit of an evolution of a discussion. I wish I had a direct answer, but I don't, I sit to that.
Yeah, you will see us try to do our best to centralize it and kind of build out from the center out.
Yeah.
And my last question is, are you going to work with the Quinalt Nation at all? Because they're deploying that new fiber landing on their property up north.
I'm not aware of it.
I'm not familiar with it either, but I'd love more details after this if you want to chat.
Sure.
Yeah, great. Thanks for the questions and the engagement.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. I have several questions, too. First one is, is this a definite, is it happening or is it still in the research?
No, no, we, we have a process. We selected coming here back in November. And so we have this really unique process doing selections throughout the United States. We've got two guys from MIT, and I got a patent pending on how we do it. It's actually really unique. So, yeah, to answer your question, we're coming.
Great, okay. Next question related to that. What, what's your timeframe? You know, start to completion, when we start to see activity, when would we expect some service?
Right, so, Matt?
Yeah, I can tell you, Matt, you're going to like this. You're going to see a LiDAR camera on a truck, probably driving through town, doing some aerial assessments on the poles as soon as next week. One of the gating factors is permits and license agreements and trying to get our contractual obligations complete. But we're in the design phase, and so we're starting.
Excellent. You had asked the audience about pricing, and I think you talked about your pricing for one gigabyte. I got on your website before we came, just to educate myself a little bit, and I saw that you had referenced plans from 250 megabytes to one gigabyte. I couldn't find anything regarding pricing for the different plans. Can you speak to that, or I didn't spend a lot of time on your site, but I tried to find a pricing plan?
Yeah, so we have the multi-gig product that's launching now. I want to say the price for that is $85 for the multi-gig. So you'll see, and what I mean by that's the two-gig product that's out there. And what's happening, so you can understand how this works, over time of providing internet services, the average consumer still always pays about the same price, you just keep giving them more bandwidth. So your lower-tier packages, that used to be 250 meg, our lowest-tier package will be 500. And so what happens is they just kind of shuffle down. And so the two-gig product, we launched it in Colorado, and so that was, I apologize for the exact amount. We'll send you a price sheet breakout for you to choose from. But you know, your average price is anywhere from sixty-five dollars all the way up to ninety-five, depending on what you're doing.
So will those be available to us? They said that, I think your website started at two hundred and fifty megabytes.
That's gonna change soon. Yeah, starting will be five hundred, right?
Okay, so it'll be.
Now what we'll do, to be fair, I mean, back, I apologize for interrupting you, is that we will keep a lower package. Because if we do serve, you know, lower income, et cetera, you'll see that out there. But from a price point, the, what's two fifty will be five hundred. So you know, you don't charge more for, you know, giving somebody that extra service. So yeah, you're gonna, and so what'll happen is you'll have a dropdown menu specific to your area, your town. You'll see all the prices, but you'll notice that they're all the same nationally. Yeah, we don't have very, we don't do this, I don't have different price rates for different markets. We don't do that. The only reason we had the two fifty is when we started, we offered it and it was kind of, do we want to have a low-end package for consumers? Just the opposite happened. Average consumer for us, north of ninety-five percent buy the, buy our top-tier package. So the point was, well, all right, well, why don't we give people a five hundred meg option? And then simplify it, five hundred, one, one gig, two gig. And so that's the path we're headed down.
And it's the same across the country, so it's, it's not a different package for Ocean Shores. You get the same package that we provide in Arkansas and Florida and Colorado.
Okay, I'm, I'm just kind of curious because you're speaking to the audience about eighty or eighty-five dollars, you know, who, who would be interested in that? I'm sure you're well aware, we don't have very many options out here. We've been, used two of the three available options out here and they're about half your price.
It's not fiber.
It's not fiber.
But it's.
But it, it's, it's adequate and works for, for our needs and I can't speak to everybody else.
And that's not unusual, let me be fair to this discussion. There are consumers that buy, you know, depending on what you do with it, right? It's really up to you is, these are symmetrical speeds. So depending on if you're buying from a cable company, owning a cable company, speeds aren't symmetrical. So you don't get as much up as you do down, right? So if you buy DSL, same thing, you know, so you're CenturyLink or whoever, it's even, you know, worse. So, you know, from that perspective, what you see is the difference in the quality. And so that's what with us, consumers are choosing because, you know, they want all the stuff in their home to always work. They want the product to be what they bought. And so that's why we have the different tier pricing there. So if you're just using basic stuff, buy the lowest-end package, you'll be extremely happy with it. You know, if you're just checking email and a few other things, you know, we're always open to, you know, if you want a two hundred and fifty meg at a discount price, we're always, you know, sensitive to that. So, so we always take all your feedback, you know, and the world, you know, as a whole, we, we try to make sure that we're simplifying what we offer. You know, again, if you have a bunch of stuff and then it becomes very complicated to what you do. And so again, consumers like easy, they like simple. And again, that's, that's who we try to be. But yeah, I don't try to have like five, ten different packages like our.
I guess our feedback then to that would be, you know, we have ten devices between phones, laptops, computers.
Sure.
Streaming, sprinklers, thermostats, a car.
Yeah.
Two hundred megabytes works great.
Okay.
For that. And it's about half the price of what, what I'm hearing, you know, so I can appreciate that yours is probably more consistent, it probably has better upload speeds. But to pay double, I, I don't know if I would need to do that.
Yeah, and again.
That's why I was asking about, when I saw on your website that there were different tiers, but I couldn't find pricing related to that.
Yeah, we'll send you and you'll get, like I said, for sixty-five dollars for the low-end package, which would be, you know, your two fifty or five hundred. You know, that should be relatively close to where you're at. But if you're paying half that, thirty dollars, I'll tell you to keep it. And I've had this, I've had this, you know, discussion before, I've helped our door-to-door folks and met a gentleman who had, we compete in the market, he had AT&amp;T. He was a veteran, got a great rate as a veteran, and I told him you should stay with it. I mean, there's no reason to, you know, jump ship if you're checking just a few things at email. But again, personal preference.
Well, I probably misspoke a little bit, but it's fifty dollars.
Okay, let's.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the question was, how much do we pay? We pay fifty. So we've lived here since two thousand and sixteen and we are on our third provider. Anyway, I think we're on our third. Because the service has been increasingly poor and so we always have switched to something new. Of course, none of them have ever been fiber, so you know, that's, but then we have five friends that work remote and they will jump on you tomorrow. Because they're always complaining about either the cost and then the lack of what they have. Or just, you know, in fact, they're all looking at Starlink because, that's what it's called. Because they're looking for something more. But it's the retired income, I think, rather than low income here, it's retired income, that kind of looks for different things. So that's why we, we, I mean, we're interested in fiber is just, you know.
Can we justify?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think what you'll find is, you know, again, you can try, there's no contracts, no insulation, no charges for that. So if you don't like it, you know, you can certainly switch and we'll help you switch back if needed.
Right, I got a question. Laurie, when we were talking, if I understood correctly, that the pricing was lifetime pricing, once you sign up?
We, we do have gig pricing for life, yeah.
Okay.
And what we're finding, Dan, I think you can speak to that a little bit, that we're often increasing the speed and holding our price the same.
Yeah, it's interesting, giving away a service for life. Actually, I had one in city council ask me, what does that mean? Actually, I had to think about it for a second, like, you know, how long we all gonna, they'd be around to have the service? You know, the interesting thing about all the companies I've ever been a part of or whatnot, we've never raised internet prices. And the thing that you think kind of funny about that is you ever heard price guarantee, right, from your competitors? So we offered price for life in a market years ago in Rhode Island, you know, retirement community, et cetera. We said, all right, price for life, and nobody responded to it. Comcast, no, I'm sorry, Cox, who was the competitor, and put out a price guarantee through years. Everybody was, like, people were signing, so we're like, okay, five-year price guarantee, people signed up. So you know, it's weird what we all respond to. But the simplest thing for us to do is, it's price for life. And the really unique piece is that there's no tax, there's no extra things on there. What you see on our advertisement is exactly what's on your bill. So, you know, if you want to kind of think about other charges and things that other providers kind of tack on, we don't do that.
Is there any installation charge?
None.
Okay, now, uh.
No contracts, no installation charge.
Cool, okay, my fellow Oceanite, there is a stuff out there, I picked up on the, the hardboard thingies. And he has two hundred dollars to switch now. I don't know if this means, like, if you're entering it for the first time, you get a present of two hundred dollars, is that what it means?
Yes.
Oh, okay. And then the other one that you have here is for two gigs for two thousand megabytes, it's ninety-five dollars a month.
Yeah, that would be the top tier.
And then one gig is eighty-five dollars a month. Okay, I do read, I like to pick up.
No, I love it, love it.
And whatever I don't understand, I'll drop it off at the mayor's house, I mean, office.
I love it.
Um, let's see. Can we take this outside of the United States or are we kind of like locked into here? Can we move around and go all over the world using our internet?
No. I am so sorry, it's physically here in the ground. So, no ma'am. If you're thinking of like the device in your home, no.
Okay, and last but not least, those that are looking for, trying to see if they can get into an apprenticeship type program, do they call your HR to hook up?
Yes.
Okay, are you interested in taking care of some of our high school students who are looking at becoming someday, doing what you're doing?
Love them, you know, the thing is, one of the best stories I can give you on that is a young man, you know, high schools have your children go and, and they got to go through the interview process. When they're, when they're trying to be an intern, I'll never forget this, young man, he was the last one. And I just happened to be walking by and he said, look, I know that you guys have interviewed and probably picked your, you know, person, but my mom said I have to come and interview. And so he was sitting there and I just, I was listening to this and it just struck me and I said, well, hand me his resume. And I'm looking at it, at the bottom of it, where's our geek over there? All right, so he had put down at the bottom that he had done some programming. And I'm like, really, what have you done? And it was in Microsoft, so I was like, I'll tell you what, follow me down the hall. We had this room full of all this equipment and I said, this is your job. You get to play with all this equipment, you get to fix it, refurbish it. He still works there till today. So, you know, you never know on what kids can do. But the answer is yes, you know, any of the, we, we used to do some programs in schools for the gentleman in the back, for the video side of the world. When, you know, they've got different things that they do and they're trying to, you know, in different programs. You can never sponsor enough stuff in schools, ever.
Yeah, I would, I would like to add to that, I think that's a great question. I actually worked with academia in the state of Wyoming. And Wyoming does a lot of mineral extraction, oil and gas. And so I, I worked with them to develop a, a two-year program to show the youth in Wyoming that there's more to just oil and gas. And it was really enjoyable. And we don't do enough as an industry, in my opinion, in telecommunications, we don't make this an attractive position, I think we need to do more. And I would, I would argue that it should start earlier than high school. I think we should be bringing middle schoolers in to see how to splice and, and see how to test and, and introduce them to the industry much, much earlier.
Well, now I know why you brought food, because if somebody's holding a plate, they couldn't hold the microphone too. By the way, thank you for that. But I live outside the gates of Ocean Shores. And so this is a contract with the city, correct? That you are going to be providing this service in this, within the city limits, correct?
We do a contract with the city for the right-of-way, right? So that's, there's not like a contract per se outside of that. So it allows us to dig in a yard, so to speak, in the public right-of-way. How far outside are you?
You could spit across the street.
I, we could probably serve it, we can spit.
Okay.
So.
So are you gonna be doing this within the county?
Yes, like I said, we're doing twenty-two cities between here and Seattle, so, you know, let's apologize against the city, that county that's in there, King County, apologize.
It's way up.
Right, so, you know, we've got, I can't get them all straight here anymore.
No, I understood that from Laurie, that you also do in Pacific County as well? Were you looking at things there?
Yeah, and we'll always add cities. So over time, what happens is a natural byproduct of what we do, a lot of the blanks get filled in for different reasons. A lot of states, a lot of people don't know, you know, E-Rate projects that fund connectivity to our schools, libraries, et cetera. And so as it evolves, you'll see more and more of, you know, involvement on that side, which naturally as a byproduct will connect more and more communities, so we like doing that.
And.
I love customers, so yeah.
With the fiber that you have, I just, I, I'm wondering if this is proprietary only for you? Or do you lease out the fiber for other businesses to use as well?
Yeah, so we connect business customers, so yes. And if they want to utilize our infrastructure, absolutely.
And I.
Yeah, happy to do it.
And then I also said that there is a buyout for two hundred dollars on your website?
From your, so if you're in a contract, we design that so if you are locked into some contract. Because what happens, a lot of times when we come to a market, the other provider will start locking their consumers in. They'll give them a great rate, but then now they're locked into a contract. And so it, it happens so often when we go to a market. And so what we'll do is just offer that because then they can, you know, we understand you want to take, you know, every dollar counts, so take advantage of it, but we give you an out.
Well, I remember dealing with Comcast and having looked at their ratings and their ratings were the worst of any internet provider there was. You could not get anybody, a live person on the phone and nobody returned your phone calls. So my expectation is that I want somebody who's going to be local and that there's going to be an office where I can talk to a live person.
You'll always be able to talk to a live person and you'll always be able, you want to go throw a rock at us, you know, whatever, no, we're there, absolutely.
Well, I don't necessarily go around throwing rocks, but I would like to have that conversation. And, and just have that, know that person is responsible for providing me with the service that I'm paying for.
Yeah, we've competed against Comcast a lot. I don't know if I should repeat this, but we did run a campaign one time that said nothing was slower than their internet than their customer service.
It was, they stole my.
They named us and, and so we named them, you know. But to be fair, you know, I will tell you, the big difference that you're gonna find is the customer service. The last company I had, which is still operating, was ranked number two in the nation behind Google in customer service. They weren't even known for it before we got the company. Because that's the way, honestly, guys, that's the way we, we keep people happy. And you gotta have the best, because consumers snap, it takes one, turns into two, two turns into four. So you better, better, you better be good at what you're doing or you better be good at fixing it. Because again, we're not perfect, stuff will break, outages do happen. Used to say this Buicks find poles, right? So we do have outages. It's how we react when we fix them and it's what we do for you when that happens. Again, like, good example, we started building in Florida, we got hit by hurricane. We, we learned a lot about storm surge. And so at the same time, one of the carriers in our back hall had a lot of outages and we got paid with a broad brush because of it. So we spent our own dime to fix all that, so it doesn't happen again. So again, you know, again, I would tell you, look at our worst and what we've done to fix those things, that's what makes us a good company.
And how many years in service?
I spent eight, yeah, I spent eight. I started out in Fort Riley, Kansas, and then went to the Gulf. And then I luckily got to spend part of my career in Hawaii, so it wasn't bad. But, you know, I enjoyed it.
Well, thank you for considering this area.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, how's it going? So you mentioned poles, resiliency. If there is, you trench and you get a sprinkler and then that person goes and puts a sprinkler back for some reason in this town. How many customers are affected by each line break? And is, how long does it take to repair on average in other markets?
Good question.
Are you talking about the sprinklers in your yard?
Yeah, so if you cut them, it's a little bit of leak. If they cut your glass, are you running a hole one, are you joining them back together? Are you, how do you get them back up? The fiber.
So typically the sprinklers, unless we're working in the off-season.
Sorry, misstating, I'm not worried about the sprinklers, I'm worried when they go to trench again to install two sprinklers and they break you.
Yeah, if we're cut, so I, I typically, depending on the travel, try to prepare for a two-hour restoration time for at the max. And so we're designed to where we can replace segments very quickly. And again, we try to keep the local technicians local for that response time, but we can do it very, very quickly. I would say two to four hours is, is kind of my goal. We, we'll put emergency restoration kits for the large back hall. And then, you know, we put spares and, and keep the, keep the text trucks stocked for those type of incidents.
Does every cut affect all customers or is the town segmented?
Yeah, it's segmented.
And then lastly. And then lastly, we don't have hurricanes, we have tsunamis. Are you kind of planning for that kind of restoration if the worst of the worst comes?
Well, surge is surge, so we've learned that it has a funny way of sticking around a bit longer than you think and, and be a lot higher than you think. But to answer your question, and it's strange, kind of, things like that create kind of the unique experiences and designs and elements that you do to make your network resilient. Because all the best plan in the world doesn't, you know, mother nature has a way of changing those plans. But yeah, you know, our teams have been through that quite extensively. So in Florida, for instance, we even had to go a step further. We had to set up water stations. We set up Wi-Fi stations for people to be able to access internet. I mean, we, we did a lot because that was an extensive outage. To tell you the truth, a lot of the damage actually didn't come from the storm. It came from people out with chainsaws, cutting down trees after the fact. Took down everything. That's where most of the, most of the outages were caused.
I got a question for you guys. So we've got a lot of construction going on and we've still got a lot of lots to build out. You guys do your own locates or do you hire companies to do that?
Sometimes both, but, you know, our initial technicians have the ability to do the locates for us. You know, it just depends, when I say both, you know, maybe it's outside the city area, you know, that we would assign it. Like nationally, you've got USIC, you know, et cetera. But if you've got a local entity, we do, we do both because sometimes we have to hire them. Like USIC, we have to hire and pay for them to help locate for us to, so we can build. So they'll locate your stuff, but I got to pay them, even though you're paying them. So I don't know, we talked about that a different day. But the point is, you know, that's an ongoing little thing that goes. But 99% of we locate ourselves.
Alright, thanks.
Yeah, I'd, I'd add to, just, just this morning, we had a meeting in Fort Lepton, Colorado, and they have one locator. So we went in and offered three locators to help them be able to keep up with the pace.
Yeah, them being USIC. Yeah. USIC and entities, you know, they're all, you know, controlled by a budget. They hire accordingly, you know, around October of each year for the following year. So you kind of have to get kind of in their cycle to do that. And we're constantly talking to them about that. So, but like different states, there's a few states that have their own, it's the same thing. That's a living animal. And then we also add to that, we add, there are cities that own their own infrastructure that will help them as well. So if you own your own water, a lot of cities own their own water, not a lot own their own electric anymore. But, you know, one of the tough things is with the pace that we're trying to do, depending on your department and, and the additional pressure that gets added, you know, we'll do things that are needed to help, whether, you know, we work with you alongside that, whether we buy golf carts, you know, whatever would help make the, it easier to paint a blue line on the road. But the idea is, you know, you know, cities have a general budget in which they operate in. We're, we're here not to stress that. And so, you know, if you have constraints, just tell us what they are and we'll find a way to work around. We've, we've set aside dollars. For instance, in one city in Florida, they just didn't know where their water was. And it had all these just crazy little tangents built off of it. And we were hitting it. And it was, you know, we tried ground penetrating radar, but it's all water, you know, in Florida. So it was hard to even find with that. So basically I just set aside a budget, said, no matter what happens, we'll pay for it. And that was the easiest way to do it because they had restaurants, things that would be out because of it. And so the easiest thing to do was just us set aside some dollars and then everybody was happy.
Alright, what, just a second. What depth do you guys bury the cable?
So for our feeder, we try to stay in the 48-inch range. That's pretty typical throughout the state. Often I will ask for a 24- to 36-inch exception in the neighborhoods. And to Dan's point, we were hitting water lines, Arkansas is another good example. And so a lot of times we can engineer the risk out of it, right? So we started to put a pattern together and see what depths we were. And then we changed our design and moved the depth down so we could avoid those strikes.
That's part of my question. As you've noticed around here, we have a lot of rain. I, this isn't a joke, our water table level, we've talked to several people that build a house and they can't get their foundation down because, or they can, but they have water seeping up. So is this, have you taken this into consideration that in some areas, is the fiber protected enough for moisture? I'm not talking about cutting water lines, I'm talking about the water table itself is fairly
So all the fiber in
Thank you.
Good.
Oh, you talked to
Yeah, I was just going to say, we, we've built about 50,000 passings in Florida and it's got the same kind of water table issues. So yeah, we've designed for that. That's a good question.
Sorry, I was just being a smart aleck here. Couldn't help myself. This may not be a question for you, but I need to ask it. I am my brother's caretaker, he's 79 and he's got all kinds of ailments. And the most challenging one for me is pretty much an end stage of, end stage of Alzheimer's. And I have tried, I use coast. I've tried, my son has a bunch of streaming services, so I've tried to see if I could convert my brother to use streaming. He has enough trouble figuring out the cable system, let alone a streamer. So for me to switch, because he lives by the television. So, and you probably, probably don't, I don't know if you know, but like if, if I signed up for your service for internet, would the local cable provider feed me television service through your system? Is that something that is possible?
So to answer that, okay, so video is controlled by the provider themselves. And you have contracts upstream with Disney or whomever. We used to be in the cable business, so know it really well. So they can't send their content over our network. They can stream it if they've got a streaming service, the answer is yes. Because we're agnostic to that and so are they, because they have the legal rights to do it.
Correct, okay, I may have to end up separating these services out because there's no way that he would, I mean, he literally watches television most of the day long and he would never survive if I had to get him to try and figure out how to use this streaming thing. He's, he's worse than I am with computers. Anyway, that's my question, thank you.
Yeah, and I'm going to give you a direct one, my father has Alzheimer's and aphasia, so I had to go set up his. And, you know, my father's at that stage where he, he can still joke about it because we were talking about Hogan's Heroes may become, or it looks like a new show, not, you know, and so we have some interesting discussions. So I've set his stuff up to be very easy for both him and my mom to use. And, you know, they use, in their case, I set up an HD receiver as opposed to, because the cable was chartered and it became too complicated for him to remember. So I bought him a smart TV, which has some extra channels on it for free. So, you know, his primary thing was I wanted to watch me TV because he got Gunsmoke, you got everything that you're Freemason. Think of all these. And I've sat around and watched them all again. And so Hogan's Heroes had what, one year, I think, before all that, he passed away. But the point being is, there, you can, you know, use a bit of technology that might make it easier. The hardest thing for an Alzheimer's patient, as I'm learning, is that, you know, for my father is the change, right? And that's the big thing. So, you know, if, if there's a way we can help, we certainly will. And certainly, I certainly personally understand, so, yeah.
Yeah, you could stream and then do like a service like Hulu and get your local channels through, through that medium.
I think my problem with that is, is trying to get him to be able to change channels using a computer or something. He, I mean, he gets confused using this controller for the cable system and trying to find what he's restored on the DVR. It's, his, his short-term memory is about
Yeah.
Eight seconds.
Yeah. The, the Hulu's pretty, pretty easy. I don't, I don't know if you have some friends in town that have it, but you might explore that.
They also make a simpler remote. So they do make the big, exactly. They do, and along with the phone. So, you know, there's also, there's a lot of things you can do there.
I had two, you kind of touched on one. At one point you said something about servicing 3,600 in the area. Yeah, in the initial phase. But when Matt was asking, you don't quite know where that
The step-off point, the first place we don't know where that exactly is just yet. Because it may change. If I told you today, it literally, because when they're designing their step-off point, it has a lot to do with the question earlier about redundancy and initial connectivity. So we try to typically say PUT and say, kind of simplify this, say they enter the gate coming in. And so we, we try to build from there to typically a little bit more centralized point, kind of start from. Because then we can service more homes faster. So if you kind of build from the gate in, you're really kind of limited. And so again, there's, there's a lot of considerations on that. You know, we try to optimize that first point, we step on.
Okay, my other question is, especially in my area, what we have found, so I don't know how, if you've driven through the town much, but in my area, we have some very deep drainage ditches everywhere. And we have found from recent digging in there that a lot of our lines were buried in those ditches and underneath them. And there's been problems in the area. So I guess I'm asking how you would handle that? Would you try and stay underground or would you go overground? Because like you said, on the main roads, basically, there is the overhead available, but then when you go into the cul-de-sacs, things like that, it's underground. But as far as where there's already cable and stuff like that in those drainage ditches, is that something you would also follow? And I guess how would you tackle something like that?
That's a little bit more of a, I, I want to answer that in probably a broader sense. The right-of-way for where everybody builds is where we're allocated to build at. You know, say it's, was it, say some cities it says 30 feet on center to the side, some are just, you know, so many feet off the road. It depends on, you know, what that space is for the right-of-way space for the consumer. We try to, you know, build, not where we're avoiding hitting that. Because if I built right on top of where they put the flag, we may hit it unless we already knew that it was 20 feet down. But you'll see us build to the side of it, which could be partly in the ditch, to the side of the ditch, it just depends.
Yeah, you will see us, one of the very first things we started doing in design is we use automation. And we, I call it difficult crossings. And so we try to identify those difficult crossings up front. And I will try to strategically design around those if possible. But to Dan's point, if that's where the utility easement lies, then sometimes that's, that's our only choice. So we'll try to do it as efficient as possible.
I got another question for you guys. So we've been talking about phase one. How many phases do you have planned to take care of the whole town?
Two.
That's good.
It's, it's not complicated. No, I apologize, we, we could have put that up there for you guys.
I think you have 6,300, something like that in Ocean Shores.
We, we
Physical addresses today.
Physical addresses, I'm not sure.
That's including MDUs.
Okay, that could be correct.
Yeah, so what I often say is, there's, there's no physi, there's no, sorry, fundamental business case to build fiber past a certain density. It's just that expensive. And so we try to build the densest first and then expand it out, you know, to be able to afford to expand it out. So as you can see, you know, just the 35, 3,600 homes is $5.3 million. And then we'll go into phase two and build out the rest.
Yes, I just wanted to ask, it sounds like you're committed to doing business in the area. Have you, a business plan and are you going to commit $5.3 million?
It's already committed.
Oh, it's already committed? Okay, do you have to get approval from the city council, like the
Like a franchise agreement?
Yeah, franchise
Yeah, yeah, so
You do have to get that.
The city has to approve our right-of-way. And so that's very normal, I mean, every
It's just like the garbage service, probably. Garbage company has a franchise with the city to pick up the garbage.
I, you know, it's a little bit more complicated because we're in the public right-of-way.
Okay.
So there's a few different rules that we have to follow. Sometimes there's some bonding, I mean, I'm kind of getting the weeds. But the point being, to answer your first question, we can't spend the capital fast enough. And these guys will tell you that, I never think they go fast enough.
So
Yeah, the money is
So the city council or the city will, won't stop you, you'll keep going.
I, I think the way I like to say that, answer that question is, is we like to do things with the city.
Okay, good.
I don't like the sound ever serial like that.
We're sitting at the table for a reason, Andy. We're out here for a reason. I would like the mayor to answer that question.
Absolutely. Great question, though.
I hope I didn't miss this part. So incorporating that budget, do you need to have commitments from a certain number of homeowner, property owners first? Thank you.
No, ma'am. We do, the analysis that's available to us to determine where, how we build is amazing. And I got to ask this question one time, I'm like, how do you know what you, what to do? Tell them 30 years of mistakes. You know, you, you, you get smarter as you go with this. So, you know, when we talk about where we build first, I always tell people this. I want you to go home, tell your significant other that we're going to max our credit cards out. We're going to empty her checking account, savings, everything. And we're going to go build a ton of fiber, we're going to put 10 miles of fiber to one home. How much money we're going to make? My wife would beat the crap out of me and say no. So what do you, do you think I'm going to spend that now? So we, you know, I logically build and our team does to make sure that there's a return here as we go. You know, that's why you afford to do it. And so as we expand, we'll go as fast as honestly we can. But you got to remember, and this is what's important, as fast as we want to go, not every consumer agrees with what Dan Kennedy says, what, how pretty it looks, or are we doing the right thing? So you'll see, and this is 100% fair, you'll see stops and starts. And it, it goes slow in the beginning. And the reason it goes slow is, think of it, you know, you're kind of dating in the beginning. You know, here we come along, we're coming to town, you want to see how we do. You know, and do you like each other, you know, did I, do you like my funny joke that I told? Yeah, then we go on the next date. So when we do the next section, okay, we, we sit down, talk through that. We like this, we didn't like that. And so we kind of work that out. And what you'll see over a period of about two months, we start building that pace up. And it will max out at a certain pace because we're, again, not trying to stress the infrastructure of the city, nor the consumer. You know, if you've got a bunch of roads and people out tearing stuff up, it's not really what you want to see. So we, again, you're going to see it, but it has to happen at a certain rate and it has to happen for a certain reason.
We got any more questions out there?
There he is.
See, one more technical question.
Alright, Matt.
So, so if you want to get hired.
What's the fastest that you can deploy, assuming no, like administrative roadblocks that are in the way? It's not like we have many sidewalks here to dig up.
Yeah, you do.
Yeah, so we, we try to design them and we call them FDA's, Fiber Distribution Areas. You'll hear them called zones or sectors. We try to keep those in about 250 to 300 homes and we can finish those in about 45 to 60 days. Just depends on, you know, the terrain and the rock and cobble and, and how the, how the dirt is. Yeah, you'd be surprised.
Yeah, the thing is, you can bring a lot of crews to town to do all the work. But again, it goes back to the original statement I made. We kind of have to, you know, make the relationship work. You know, we've had other, you know, we've had cities that we've gone to where we've had a lot of crews and gone really fast. And, and we, that, that ramp to get there, you know, it still can take a few months to get that high speed of, of build that you want. But it has to be done right. And I, that's why I said, you know, we're more conservative in how we approach that. Because again, you may want it really fast, but somebody else, you know, may want us to stop and do something different. There's different reasons that we stopped. We've had, we put up stuff that we've not been in somebody's yard, but the neighbor across the street didn't like what they were looking at. So we've had to change for different reasons. And I, I could tell you some funny, funny stories about paint and colors and stuff that we've had to do over the years. But the point is, as long as we're good stewards of the right-of-way, as long as we're good stewards of doing what we say we're going to do, usually the cities are very, very good at working with us to allow us to go, you know, faster.
Hang on a second, PJ, please. We got somebody on the line? Christopher, can you, you can go ahead.
Yes, I, I was wondering what, this may have already been spoken. I was wondering what the up and down speeds are going to be?
Yes, for our longtime listener, first-time caller, they're semestral. So, you know, the, everything is, if it's 500, it's 500. If it's one gig, it's one gig. If it's two gig, it's two gig. it's 2 gig, if it's 5 gig, same thing, 10 gig, same thing.
So are you going to offer 10 gig?
We, we will to the one vanity customer that may want it. Maybe you, yeah, okay. That's the, the equipment can do it. It's rare to find a customer that knows how to use it. I mean, to be fair.
I do have, I, I host 5, 5M gaming servers and.
Oh, wow, okay.
Yeah, so I do have a couple servers at my house, so I was, that was a big, a big issue that we ran into out here, is not having fiber.
Do you guys know each other?
Chris, I would say it's inevitable, right? They're working on 25-gig pond, 40-gig pond, so as the market, you know, as this technology matures, it's inevitable.
And, is this Christopher?
Yeah.
Christopher, what, the equipment that we have at the core allows us to continue to upgrade the equipment at your home without changing the core equipment. So if you, you know, track down the, or follow the technology on the core, they refer to it as XGS pond. So the, the, that gear means that your end device at your home, we can change without it and do an upgrade. So I will tell you, you know, the 10-gig side, to be fair, is still relatively new. I wouldn't count on, as far as, I call it quality, because it just takes time for that. You know how it goes when they, you know, come out the door with a new piece of technology, especially when people aren't really using it. And so it hasn't been stressed enough to tell you that, you know, you can be happy that you're getting the true 10-gig out of it. Because again, there's very, very few users, especially residential, that would actually challenge that 10-gig. But if you do, bring it on.
All right, we got Don next. Okay, he's, hang on PJ, there's been some people waiting online, so sorry. Go ahead, Don.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, I haven't heard yet exactly, could you explain what you do between the street and the house, and then from the house inside, bringing the fiber into the house to whatever location the modem is located? Is there a box on the outside of the house? Do you trench to the house and you do the house wiring or the, I call it wiring, but it's fiber cable? What do you do between the street, the house, and then inside the home? Thank you.
Yeah, you bet, Don. Two methods. So if it's underground, we'll put, we call a flower pot, every other house right on the lot line. And then when the installer comes in, he will, he will trench in from that flower pot on the lot line to the, to your existing net or to the side that your existing services, whether it be cable or copper, come in on that side of the house. If it's aerial, we'll run an aerial drop to your house, very similar to the coax that's in place now.
And then from that point, inside your house, you've got that little box that, you know, we do a transition into the home to put the gateway in.
Yeah, we'll run fiber all the way into that device as well.
All right, Don. PJ, go ahead.
Thanks. You mentioned that 45 to 60 days was kind of your, you know, once approvals were given, et cetera. At that point, have you already pre-established a mapping area for where you would begin here in Ocean Shores? And I'm sorry if I missed it earlier.
So we, we've got the designs for the area. It's really the, what I was referring to earlier is the connectivity between us and the PUD. So when they design where he's going to do a step-off at, probably not far away from where we can publish that.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that, and we can, we'll definitely publish that, so you guys will know. That 45 to 60 days was just for one fiber distribution area? You know, depending on the construction fatigue and, and how the community likes or thinks we're doing, you know, it's always our goal to build a couple in parallel, if, if allowed.
All right, we got another online. Is that Kim? Go ahead, Kim.
You talked a lot about the timing, but I'm just looking for a more specific answer. Do you know when your first customers will actually be able to use your service?
So depending on permitting and how soon we can get things rolling with the town, you know, I would hope to be getting something in the ground within 90 days.
All right, do we have anybody else online? Nope, all right.
To more specifically answer Kim's question, within six months, Kim, we want to be likely to reach first customers. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Will the homeowners be notified before you start digging?
Absolutely. So you get notified in several different ways. We do something, you know, by law, where every consumer gets notified of construction. Consumers, you know, none of us always check that mail, you know, because it looks like your average piece of mail, whether it's kind of a postcard style or whether it looks like a letter. We do it a few different ways, but we also do it digitally as well. So you'll know, I mean, trust me, you will know, you will get peppered with notifications. The average consumer, kind of think of it these days, takes about 20 touches. You know, the, and I should say, you know, you got early adopters who'll see it and just want to sign up, but the average consumer takes about 20 touches from us, you know, to sign up. So, yeah, you get a lot of notifications.
One thing I, what I really like is we, we come and hang construction door hangers on the door before we start. But it, it never fails that people aren't, weren't sure we're coming, and then we ask them if they have the door hanging, and they say, yeah, but we didn't read it. So I would encourage you to read them. I think we do two rounds of door hangers.
We do, and plus a mailer.
Yeah.
And then you'll get a plethora of mailers, traditional mail and digital.
Yeah, because many of us, you can't get to my door. I'm sorry. You will be able to get to my door. I have an 85-pound security person, four feet, and she'll run back and forth, so you have to put it on the gate that's in the front. So I would prefer you let us know. You know, I mean, you know, you can do that, but leave it somewhere where we can see it. Accessibility is great.
So you got a 45-pound person?
I got an 85-pound, four-foot person, a four-legged person that's out there.
So throw it like on a pork chop, throw it over there?
She'd like you forever.
Yes, ma'am. We'll do it.
Sorry, you mentioned door hangers. That's been kind of a hot-button issue in this neighborhood, because we have so many people, vacation homes and things like that, so leaving door hangers out on residents that they sit there forever and it kind of gives things away, so I just wanted to mention that.
No, that's good to know. Thank you for that. We'll be mindful of that.
We'll work closely with the city. That's part of the reason we're here today. And so this is not a one-time show, right? Well, I'll be here. I live in Washington, I live in Tacoma, not, not across the street, but I live here. And we'll, we'll come out and we'll have events, we'll have more information. We're, we're not going to make it so that you don't know what's happening in your neighborhood. We know this is important. And we don't want to leave door hangers on homes that are unoccupied. That's not safe for anyone. And the, the mayor and city administrator have spoken with me about that, and we'll, we'll work with the city.
We're not perfect. If you see something, please let us know.
Well, you also said that you might, we might be seeing a truck driving around, testing or, or checking out things. Will that truck be with your logo and everything on it, so we know that it's a real contractor?
They should be here, so to speak, somebody that really should be here.
Yeah, yes.
I like that. I'm going to make sure that happens.
Yeah, we, well, our construction contractors do.
Yeah.
And this is a firm that is doing the pre-work in front of it, so we'll, we'll just go ahead and have them do that.
We got another one online? Janet? Go ahead, Janet.
Just a quick question regarding, I came in really late here, so I'm just asking a question. How does this service compare to Starlink?
Hey, you can take that.
Starlink's in a really nice package and looks really, really good. I can tell you that Starlink has some density issues. Don't quote me on it, but probably six to eight subs per mile. They'll fix it eventually. They do have some, some latency, but I would put fiber against that anytime, any day. Symmetrical and higher speeds. And I would say more consistent service.
And weather. You get a consistent throughput. Obviously, anything that would affect that signal, you know, you certainly have that as potential interference, but, oh, that product will get better. There's no doubt about it. How many satellites they got there now? But it's crazy. But yeah, I think from our standpoint, and what you'll find, Janet, is that this, it works no matter what, you know, weather is not the issue.
And then I, I guess lastly, Janet, I would add price. It is an expensive service. I don't, I haven't had it, I'm not sure where, if it's come down or where it's at these days, but I think we beat their price all day long.
I, I missed your price, so what is it? I know Starlink's about 130 a month, so what are?
Our highest tier is 95, so at, at the 2-gig range, so you're definitely well under that.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
We got another one online? Jason, go ahead.
Sorry about that. I, I missed a button. So when the work is done, how are we notified that, in the area, that we can sign up and access the internet?
Jason, you're going to be notified through traditional mail. Matter of fact, we have consumers that are door-to-door have gone to and said, please stop sending me mail. And so you'll get that, and also there's the digital side of the world. So any of the, you know, apps that you generally watch different things on, you'll see those advertisements there. And then you'll have very specific ones to your address. I mean, the technology available to us to target consumers from an advertising standpoint is quite extensive. And so we spend a lot of time and money on that side. So you will get, there isn't any reason why you will not know when it's available, what day you can sign up, how you can sign up, who you can talk to. It's, it covers every detail.
And I, and I do have something else. Is this something that you all, I know you said, you know, it depends on the permits and all that fun jazz, but is this more of a, a project that you're trying to do in the more favorable weather, like summer? Or is this something that you're like looking to kind of get started whenever the ball gets rolling?
The latter. But you got to remember, you know, you have to be cognizant of what construction does during this time of season to yards, et cetera, so they don't easily repair. So sometimes we've stopped, just because, you know, you're, you're causing more destruction than what it's worth. And so we're always cognizant of that. But hiring local contractors who are used to the conditions helps. But again, we're very sensitive, Jason, to what it looks like. It just can't look terrible, you know, very long. People are, just don't accept it. I don't accept it. So, you know, why would you? So again, we'll go with what we're, mother nature allows us to do and obviously what it looks like.
All right, I think that's it for me. Thank you very much.
All right, thanks.
I guess we don't have any other online? Oh, we got one in the crowd, Rick.
In line, not online.
Okay.
You might consider, we just started this last weekend, was our first festival this season. This town is known for its festivals.
Love those.
It might be beneficial to you to set up a booth here during the festivals?
Absolutely.
I mean, not only are you, almost all the residents filter in and out of the festivals at some point in time during the weekend, but we also get so many people from greater huge sound area. If you're going into other markets, it might be a preemptive strike to let these people know you're working their direction and might be a good way for you to get your name out there and, and touch a lot of people face to face, just a thought.
No, we love festivals. I think some that you guys wouldn't think about, in Illinois, we did one, it was a pumpkin chunkin'. That was pretty cool. You know, they can launch those things like a mile. And so, yeah, no, I, we've done them all, shapes and sizes. So yeah, we love those. I do, yeah.
Something I've been wanting to do for a while, I call it the Slice Splice. And so have pizza, and people can come into the splice trailer and see how the, how we're